Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Tuesday, February 22, 2022, about 12 minutes after nine. We were able to get the jumper cables out after a few of us here this morning, but that's okay. At least we had long enough jumper cables to make it work. Regular meeting, Liberty County Commissioners' Court. We do have business for the court. We have a form established. Records show that Commissioner Karbowski, Commissioner Wilson, President. Commissioner Whitmire is out today. So let's all rise and lead, if you can lead us in our pledges.
Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the law. Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
If you all prayed with me this morning, Heavenly Father, we thank you for another, another day, another day to get up in the morning and offer our praise for the opportunities that you give us in life each and every day. For the today, for tomorrow, for days past, and for days in the future. We pray that you will be with us each and every day and help us to make the right decisions that will help everyone, everyone that is concerned, and everyone that has need, everyone that has a want. And through your grace, Lord, we ask that you will grant us the wisdom to do the best that we can in this regard. Lord, please be with the folks in the world now. We have some disturbance across the ocean. We have disturbance in Russia and the Ukraine that will be of a large impact on everyone. And Lord, we pray that you will intervene and bring wisdom to those persons making decisions and help them to get along. Help us all to get along. That's all we ask. We ask that you be with us today and every day. Forgive us our many sins. And Lord, as we move forward through the rest of this year, we ask that you walk beside us, lead us, guide us, direct us, and grant us the wisdom that only you can give. We ask these things in Jesus' most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
We don't have any notices or proclamations this morning. Except one great notice is that I'm over COVID. The Lord will tell you all what it, you know, it dodged me for two years. And I felt pretty good about that until the last come and get me. And I'll tell you all the truth, I felt like I've been in about three rounds with Mike Tyson. And I still got my ear, okay? So you think about it, that was, woo. It, I don't know, I guess that was the, the news variant, whatever variant is. Anyway, it was one of those deals that thank the good Lord that he watches out for us every day. And so anybody that has never had it, and those of you that have, I'll pray for you. But it is one of those things that you just don't get energy, you know, like you normally would. Now, I'm used to getting up and rolling in the morning, but, you know, Super Bowls, one thing. And I wasn't in that Super Bowl, believe me. But anyway, we pray for those folks that have been exposed as they recover in the future for the folks as well. Holy comment. Well, first of all, Lee, you got anything else to add or call?
Final call.
Capital.
February 28, the brands go into public domain. So if you've got a family brand, you want to hang out to it, you're worried about it, get it in by Monday. Monday's the last day.
Monday's the last day. And how much does that charge?
$26.
$26 for 10 years.
That's correct.
Small price to pay to keep your brand intact. All right. Good deal. All right, Mr. Jeff Johnson's with us this morning with JTT Towing and Storage. He'd like to address the court. And Jeff, if you would, come on up here, please, sir. Introduce yourself to everybody. I've mentioned several times.
Yes, sir. I'm unforgettable. I'm sure you're that.
But as tall as you are, it's kind of hard for you.
Oh, yeah. Hello.
Yeah. Anyway, you were going to talk with us, you know, back.
Yeah, so there was an ordinance presented and tabled back on the 23rd of November. And I just want to check on, see where it stood. I've had great conversations with a lot of great people. I still have my number one concern has been and always will be the safety of our police departments, our officers, and anybody else who gets the honor to stand on the side of the road and wait for a tow truck. I'm sure we've all had it, everybody in this court relates. That's a scary time in life.
Yeah.
I've come, after 14 years of this, I've come to one conclusion. Flashing lights attract idiots. And I don't mean that out of disrespect to anybody, but. So if you've got an officer that's sitting out there on the side of the road waiting on a tow truck that's coming from wherever it's coming to, I don't present this, I don't bring to this court anything that I don't have a solution for. I have a solution. I'm close. I'm in. They've been on rotation out there for two years now. And at this point in time, everything prior to this new ordinance that's being presented, we've met the requirements for it. So I just, like I said, this time, I just wanted to see where it stood on the table and make sure it didn't get forgotten about.
Okay. I do appreciate you guys. Thank you. We appreciate you coming in and visiting with us. I'll, I'll get with Matthew and see where he's sitting right now. As he does, he goes through the legal process.
No, again, I understand that, that I said it's aggravating.
It's a lot of times that I understand. But thank you for coming. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Reverend.
Yes. All right. Next item, declare conflicts of interest. Anybody have anything on the agenda today that would constitute a conflict of interest in their regard? Speaking now, not hearing any conflicts today. We'll move forward to the consent agenda. And I think I have one, Angela. Add on to the McGriff to pay that one. It was approved in the last court, if you remember. I just don't know if you have enough thinking. Don't have, know if you have enough thinking in your checkbook to, in your pen to think of that.
How much is it?
It's $1,134,721.
Slow down on that one.
$134,721 and 77 cents. It's for insurance policies.
Yeah, that did.
Yeah. It was approved in the last court, which needs to be on the consent agenda.
Anything else there?
I have some budget amendments to add. I have one that concerns a road bridge precinct one. It was recognizing the completion of road damages, road damages project was $144,000 to increase other income and capital outlay. I have another one that, this is for smashing funds from GLO grant. And it will come from Roadbridge. I think we talked about this a little bit before, but I need to do the budget amendment to get this clear. So other revenue will increase by $111,175.19 and some of the transfers out so that that money can go to the rent fund.
Any discussion?
And the payoffs for the contong that were on the agenda last Commissioners' Court will be paid on the February 28 payroll. So they were up against our timeline last time, so they'll be on the 28th payday.
Along with the additions, I make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay. Yeah, motion. Bruce, second. Greg, you approve that. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. And motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Regular agenda. This is first one for me. I'm just going to try to figure out where we're at on this one. Consider approved payment to New Source Energy Constructors Incorporated for Mercy Repairers prior to hurricane in 2019 in the amount of $1,860.24. And we've been presented with this bill for quite some time, but we haven't paid it. And now we got hurricane season coming back up again. And what this was is repaired to the, to the board on that computer and for the, that generator at the Mercy Management Building. And I don't know, what one?
Wasn't done on battery charging bill of the generator to charge department. Did that?
No, I think this was the one specifically for the Mercy Management Building. Was it Gordon's right?
Yeah.
Is there a reason why we can't pay it, Angela, or?
Is there a P O issue or is there?
I don't have a copy of the bill. Do you guys? Was it turned in over the past? I don't know, anybody know? I'm guessing that it was Carson sent it over.
We'll take a break just for a second. We're going to get this fixed up.
Wouldn't be the first thing I slipped through the cracks, but.
The floor is fixed here in short answer.
All right, ready to redo them again.
There you go. But anyways, since hurricane season is rapidly approaching, I'd like to see if we can pay this. And I'm pretty sure it's going to be an issue of whether or not a bill was issued. And was that prior to the new rules of POs being at least recognized and sent in proper manner? Or was it hacked?
I know we don't have it on hold, so it's lost, really. Turn it in. Maybe it was just not turned in.
I don't know. And the court's pleasure at this point can be, we can table this until we get it better.
I think so.
Adam, whose revenue are we taking this out of? And if it was a PO, was it already taken out of that account back in 2019?
I'll have to go research it because.
Well, that's why we're on table. So let's do that research.
Make a motion to table.
At least we're going to bring it back up again. All right. So you got a motion to table. Bruce? Second, Greg. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. And motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number two, Ms. Harris. County Treasurer, Considered Approved Remote Deposit Capture Agreement with Prosperity Bank.
Yes, sir. So I'm asking the court today to let us move forward with this agreement with Prosperity Bank. It's at no cost to the county. But it is a little machine that we can run checks through and make the deposit remotely without having to run back and forth to the bank every day whenever we have only checks. So it's a service that the bank provides. It really helps us with efficiency and it's just the right thing. So it's just the technology.
These are checks that can be deposited.
Correct. Yes. It's just a remote machine that will allow the deposits to go into the bank without us physically driving over and handing them to the tower. I sent it over to the county attorney's office, so I'm glad you can play in on it.
I don't see any issues with it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion Leon. Thank Bruce to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. And motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Number three, thank you. For Mr. C's department and Stephanie, you're here today to help us with all this. You may as well go ahead and get on up and get ready because you're going to be here for a while, okay? Number three, Considered Approved Payment Application. This is actually payment application 10.
Yes, that needs to be corrected.
To be corrected to white construction in the amount of $622,268.95 for construction management services for the New Sheriff's Office in JP 3X. Okay? You have anything you need to? Chris, you tend to?
Yes, sir. That was my mistake.
Any?
I'm sure that everyone here has read the auditor's comments on this payment and his concerns with this payment, $622,268.95. At this time, as long as those questions are out and his concerns on that, I make a motion that we table this until we get that clarified.
Sure. Motion tabled. Bruce, say Leon. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number four, this is Considered Approved the list of items for the upcoming auction that will be surplus seized items.
That's correct. You guys have a list of it in your packet. Several vehicles that were seized and surplus from Costco for that are now over in usable condition. Just need to get rid of them through the proper channels. We have extra computers, laptops, printers, miscellaneous things that this is how we're able to dispose of them. Can we insert one off?
Make a motion for approve. Got a motion from Leon. Say approve to approve. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five, Considered Approved Soliciting Bids for a motor coach to be utilized as a mobile command center for law enforcement purposes for the district attorney's office. Okay? I think we brought this up before and we were just looking for the appropriate bus.
Yes.
So can we find the bus?
They found one they liked, so we were putting out a bid for that particular unit or equal to. We should have that come back to court and hopefully in a few weeks within.
Chief, y'all had a chance to look at it or?
I have.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, say Greg to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six, Considered Approved Soliciting Proposals for Permitting and Inspections Software for the Engineering and Permitting Department. This ought to speed things up there.
He's been asking for it. We're able to get to it now, so hopefully we'll have something good to learn to look at.
All right. Any discussion?
Do we have any prices? Or you're just going out for bids on this?
We have the budget, $50,000.
Yes, sir.
What this is, this will allow us when we process permits. Right now, we're having to make copies. We're having to set the copies aside. Whenever somebody has time, they come back and scan them through the copy to hard drive.
Hey, this is just going to be a script, right?
Right.
Well, this will be anything that will help our inspectors out in the field where they can do just like the officers and submit it right then instead of carrying all these hard copies back.
It actually will. We have purchased notebooks for each one of the inspectors. They'll be able to access the cloud from the field.
That'd be great.
I had a chance to sit down with this company and check out the features and stuff. It's going to, it's going to propel the engineering department. My idea is a computer. So they'll be able to work in the field constantly, like constant data upload, science permits. It's just the technology they need to bring them up to the 21st century, so.
Make a motion for Leon to approve.
Second.
Say Bruce. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you, David. Y'all can put your spurs back on. Number seven, Consider Approved Request from District Attorney's Office to Apply for the Continuation of the Grant for the Victim's Assistant Coordinator through the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for the Fiscal Year 2022-2023. This is a Liberty County match grant paid from the DA's Special Investigative Fund. So this is just a continuation. Matthew, is that the way you see it?
That's correct. Yes. It looks like it's just continuation and it'll help fund that position. I don't know any details about the brand itself, about, you know, proportion, you know, cost matching, et cetera. But yeah, that's, that's the way it appears.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Say Leon to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, Consider Approved Solicitation of Bids for a Modular Office Building for Costco Precinct 5. Now, they needed addition. Say that. We've looked at this for probably since October. And we've come back with some ideas. At this time, we found some modular buildings. It just, the cost of the modular buildings exceeds $50,000. And we do have this in the budget, correct, Angela?
Yes.
Okay. So all I'm asking is if y'all would approve the solicitation of bids for modular office building for Costco 100 is a group and see if we could get them a little extra space up there.
Make a motion to approve.
Y'all do realize the last modular building that we purchased, we stayed in it for over 10 years, but Ralph Fuller, Judge Fuller's him now. Are we looking for any more permanent situation in these modular buildings?
Well, that actually is what you're talking about. It's when Fuller was perished.
Perished, correct. Yes.
We're leasing that. We didn't buy it. And I'm pretty sure whenever he moves to this new building, that that company probably won't come pick it up because there won't be anything left of it if they do try to pick it up.
So that's my point. I mean, do we have anything, future plans to build anything out there?
We will.
For parking, yes.
Yeah. It's, that's going to be in the future. Right now, we're going to be focusing on Cleveland.
Yeah, they don't have any room. They got enough room.
Anyway, we do have a motion from Leon to say Greg to approve to solicit bids. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine.
Can I speak to this first?
Yes.
Okay. So the items number nine, all the way down to 16, excluding 11 and 12. These are for your consideration and approval purchasing dump trucks from Buyboard through Volvo Mack of Waco. And we're putting them on early. The leases we currently have expire months out, but we have to order the trucks this day and age this early to get them in in time.
Right.
So we have been presented, pictures have been presented with the trucks that would, are available to purchase. They've been presented with lease agreements that are for the future for when their current lease expires. The lease agreements are not the typical 12 to 13 month or 24 month lease. They are set to, whereas in 2024, they will all expire at the same time. We're trying to get this a little bit more consistent with our lease agreements to help everybody. So I just need all the commissioners to be aware that, you know, once we place this order and we sign these lease agreements, this, this is going to be happening months from now. And so that's what you're committed to. And so as, as you go through each one of these, they're pretty much the same until we get to 11 and 12, and as we come up, we get there.
Okay. So number nine is Consider Approved Lease Purchase of a 2023 Mack Pinnacle P164T Dump Truck for Volvo Mack Trucks of Waco for $149,000 through Buyboard contracts. So 1-19 for Roadbridge 4.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion Bruce, say Leon to approve. All favor.
Aye.
Likewise, next. And motion carries. Moving on to number 10, Consider Approved Financing of a 2023 Mack Pinnacle Dump Truck, P164T, with Bank Corp South Equipment Financing for Roadbridge 4.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, say Leon to approve. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 11, Consider Approved Rescinding the Purchase of a 2023 Mack Granite Dump Truck Previously approved by Commissioners' Court on December 14, 2021, from Volvo and Mack Trucks Waco through the Buyboard contract number 301-19 in the amount of $154,336, I believe. That's going to be for Roadbridge 3. So we're going to rescind that so we can go back and do this correctly, et cetera.
Well, yes, and this was a Mack Granite Dump Truck. The reason we're rescinding it and the lease is because the Pinnacle Dump Trucks will be in a more timely manner. We wouldn't have to wait so long. So that's why we're rescinding this 11 and 12. It's the purchase of, and the number 12 was the lease agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Yeah, motion Leon, say Bruce. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. That motion carries. And on 12, Consider Approved Rescinding 13 Month Lease Option from Bank Corp Equipment Financing of this 2023 Mack Granite Dump Truck Previously approved by Commissioners' Court on December 14, 2021. What's court's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Leon, say Bruce. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 13, Consider and Approved Lease Purchase of a 2023 Mack Pinnacle P164T Dump Truck for Volvo and Mack Trucks of Waco for $149,900 through the Buyboard contract, 601-19 for Roadbridge 3. So we're going to replace it. Okay?
Yeah. That is a replacement for 11 and 12.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Leon, say Bruce. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 14, Consider Approved Financing of that 2023 Mack Pinnacle Dump Truck, P164T, with Bank Corp South Equipment Financing for Roadbridge 3.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Leon, say Bruce. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 15, Consider Approved the Lease Purchase of two Mack Pinnacle P164T Dump Trucks for Volvo and Mack Trucks Waco for $149,900 each through the Buyboard contracts. So 1-19 for Roadbridge 2.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. I'm going to say Greg. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries. And let's see if we can finance this. Consider Approved, number 16, Financing of two 2023 Mack Pinnacle P164T Dump Trucks with Bank Corp South Equipment Financing for Roadbridge 2.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, say Leon to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 17, Consider and Approved Recommendation to Award Bid Number 22-08 Asphalt Overlay for Precinct 1. Bruce, you want?
Yeah, so we're on 460 up and trying to get some overlay. Roads over there is heavily used. I appreciate the court to approve this.
This is for both the materials. They were the only bidder that submitted a bid for this overlay project in the amount of $152,000.
What's the, what's the credit amount?
$12,160 square yards. It's two-inch compacted hot mix asphalt overlay.
Two-inch compacted or two-inch or something?
Two-inch.
Two-inch compacted. We're already going over a chip steel road, I mean asphalt road. So we've already gone over, we've come in and made our patches and compacted those. So keeping the rubber 58,000 low pounds, two-inch compacted.
What's court's pleasure? Make a motion to approve. Greg, say Bruce. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, Dan. Appreciate you, y'all. Number 18, Tax turns live order. Consider Approved Resell Bids for Dividend Tax Properties. MHT Homes, number one LLC. Property ID number 74307, with the amount of $7,820. Number two is M. Bartle. Property ID number 54371 for $1,852. And number three is Jay Smith. Property ID number 12028 for $3,000. Any questions on these or considerations? Everybody happy with the amounts?
Yep. Make a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve all three.
Motion for Bruce.
Second.
Second Greg to approve. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nineteen, Mr. Poston, uh, considered and approved master agreement for operating leases with copiers, or copiers with platinum copiers financed by Sourcewell. Dave Matthew, you want? Give us the, the big look at them.
So y'all will recall there was a, a bit of a snafu, um, with our copier lease agreement. I came up to Commissioners' Court, uh, not too long ago, but we didn't get a, um, actual agreement signed. Uh, so there's, there was kind of ambiguous circumstances what Commissioners' Court actually authorized and wanted to do. So, um, I've gotten with, uh, with platinum copiers. We've discussed it at length, uh, and, uh, come up with what I'm recommending here, which is a typical operating lease. So, uh, for, that, that's a master agreement for all copiers, uh, that the county, uh, has. And so in the future, if we need an additional unit, uh, instead of coming back to Commissioners' Court and duplicating another agreement, we will just be able to add on through a purchase order. Now, the purchase order itself is gonna have to have some language. Uh, uh, so, uh, here we're gonna have to modify the purchase order form itself so that it references this master agreement, uh, today. Um, but, uh, so, uh, this will, uh, make kind of the administrative burden for managing these contracts a lot less for the county. Um, uh, and this would, uh, more or less allow us to keep the copiers that we now have. Uh, and so, uh, the, you know, before we kind of had a hodgepodge of copiers, different various models, uh, et cetera. So now this, uh, will kind of streamline a lot of that to make it a little bit more manageable for, uh, for Nick and for, um, for our folks. But, but it, uh, this is ultimately Commissioners' Court decision. Uh, you have, uh, two options. You can, uh, approve this or, uh, say, uh, the only alternative would be, uh, telling platinum coppers, uh, okay, we don't want, uh, the copiers that we are now in possession. We want our old ones. Uh, uh, the only other kind of hiccup, uh, uh, that, uh, I would bring to the court's attention and also, uh, Dwayne and Angela is, I'm not sure of the accounting, uh, uh, effects that this is gonna have as far as our old, uh, copiers and the, uh, in the capital and depreciation, all that. So I kind of want to flag that for y'all to, to make sure y'all were comfortable with all this. But otherwise, this, uh, you know, uh, I think meets the needs of the county.
In our last discussion, you have mentioned that some of our copiers that are picked up and replaced. Did we address that issue and?
Well, yeah, that's, that's what this is doing. So this is, uh, uh, this would be kind of, uh, going back and saying, all right, that's exactly what we intended have happen at the original Commissioners' Court. We, we did intend to, uh, you know, for Platinum to come pick up the old copiers and, uh, to, to start a new contract with new copiers.
I think the only thing that we had to stress is, um, I think they're presented as operating leases. And when we read it, I believe they are actually capital leases. So that's a little bit concerning, um.
Say that again, Angela. They're actually what leases?
Uh, I think that when we read it, the contracts are the agreements that we still have an option to purchase. And some of those things made it a capital lease instead of an operating lease. Um, I know they.
The old agreement, right?
I believe it was the new one. I believe it was the new one when I went through it. But, um, did you want to table this today and let Dwayne read it? Um, we did discuss that a little bit.
Um, yeah, uh, you know, I, I've kind of, uh, it's a front burner issue just because the longer we go, the more ambiguous our circumstances are. And, uh, you know, but it, you know, if we need to or, um, you know.
Yeah, I'll give it. As soon as I read it, I felt like it was still a capital lease on the paperwork that I got. And I know this also, Seltzer, I was saying, no, it's not, but that's the only case, so.
Because in the future, in the past, we have come across these copiers that on lease, lease purchase and time that the lease is over, these copiers ain't no good anyway.
So we're switching them to operating leases, but we're looking to maybe not do that.
Based on the conversation this morning, Matthew, and what you are, you're saying also, I think it's, you know, best to table this. We'll further review our auditor.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion from Leon to table. Second Bruce, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. And we need to get the, uh, proper language to take care of here. Uh, number twenty, I'm gonna ask the court to, let's hold off on number twenty until we, uh, move into and through executive session and have a discussion with, uh, Mr. Poston. At this time, I would ask the court to consider moving into executive session.
Make a motion to go to executive session.
Thank you.
Motion from, uh, Bruce, second Leon, this is gonna be, uh, deliberations, uh, with our, actually, uh, intersection. My glasses off. Or somebody's glasses off. Five, five oh seven, one, thank you. Uh, conversation will turn. So we have a motion for Bruce, second Leon, to move into executive session. All favor say aye.
Aye.
We're out of executive session, back in regular session, ten, twelve AM, uh, twenty-second of February. And, uh, we'll move back to item number twenty, where we consider, constipated with our county attorney, Matthew Poston, authorizing, uh, Liberty County Judge to execute order regarding settlement offers in the matter of Texas up going, multi-district litigation for Galveston County in the matter of County of Liberty versus Purdue Pharma Incorporated and all. MDL pretrial cause number two zero one eight dash six three five eight seven in the one hundred and fifty-seven second District Court in Harris County, Texas, removed. So Matthew, uh, looks like we need some motion to move forward in, uh, in the court to authorize them to execute the order to award himself. Correct?
That's it. Yes, uh, so a, uh, not only, um, a, a motion that, um, authorizes settlement substantively, but also the, uh, including the motion should be, um, the authorization for Judge J nine to, to know of the settlement order.
Okay. I make the motion that we accept a settlement and that we authorize Judge Knight, County Judge, to execute the order.
Second.
Yeah, motion. Leon, second Bruce. Move forward with this, uh, this order and execution. To be decided, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion to adjourn from Bruce.
Thank you.
Second, uh, Leon.